Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the Jackson Public School District Regular Meeting of this Board of Trustees for May 2nd, 2017. Thank you very much for your attendance this afternoon. We're happy that you are all here. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance from our Middle School Division, and our student will be introduced by Ms. Evans.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Murray, Madam President, and School Board Members and Audience, it is my privilege to introduce Miracle Small. Miracle is an eighth-grade scholar at Blackburn Laboratory Middle School. She is the daughter of Ms. Shannon Ammons, and at Blackburn, Dr. Laquanta Nelson serves as the Instructional Leader. Intelligent, friendly, compassionate, and humorous are all words that describe this scholar. Miracle Small is a model student who attends Blackburn Laboratory Middle School. There, she has served in many capacities, including Student Council President, Cheerleader, and is one of only two females who played on Blackburn's middle school soccer championship team. When Miracle graduates from high school, she plans to attend Mississippi State University and major in Biology. She then aspires to become a pediatrician. Ladies and gentlemen, Miracle Small.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Miracle Small, scholar at Blackburn Laboratory Middle School. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Attention, salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. If you wait one second, our colleague Ms. Sims wants to provide you with a certificate of appreciation for your being here today and for that wonderful lead of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miracle. We appreciate you, your hard work as band, student council president, soccer team player, and cheerleader, but most of all, we appreciate you being a great scholar. We want to give you this token of appreciation on behalf of Dr. Murray, our superintendent, and all of my colleagues as board members. And we have a token for you.
Thank you, Miracle. Are your parents here today?
Mom.
Well, Mom, would you please stand? Our moment of inspiration will be presented to us tonight by Bishop John C. Evans, Jr. Bishop John C. Evans, Jr. is a native of Hallsborough, North Carolina, where he graduated high school. Later, he received a BS degree in Criminal Justice and a Master's of Divinity degree from Hood Theological Seminary and a Doctorate of Ministry from Livingstone College. Bishop Evans has been in the ministry for 41 years, starting at the age of 17. He's been used as an instrument by God to purchase and pay off Cathedral AME Zion Church located at 428 West Northside Drive in Jackson. Now by faith, he is stepping out into a new work in the city of Jackson. Presently, Bishop Evans is leader of Jerusalem Gospel Mission located at 175 Richardson Drive, Jackson, Mississippi. His favorite scripture is 1 Corinthians 2:4, "And my speech and my preaching was not with enticing words of God's wisdom, but in demonstration of the Spirit and of the power." It's my pleasure to present Bishop John C. Evans, Jr.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm on the program as a moment of inspiration, so I have to inspire you. I've found the answer. I've learned to pray with faith to guide me. I found the way. The sun is shining for me each day. I, I've found the answer. I've learned to pray. There was a man in John's Gospel, Chapter 9. He was blind from birth. The disciples walked past him and asked Jesus a question. Who sinned? This man or his parents? Jesus responded, neither. This man nor his parents sinned, but that the work of God, the works of God, may be manifest. The world has problems. The plan God has is Jesus, and every time we come to church, we'll find a promise to help us with the problem, the plan, and we'll find a promise. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Evans. If you will wait one second, Reverend Evans, our colleague wants to thank you for being here this evening.
Bishop Evans, we want to thank you for such a unique form of inspiring us today. I've been on the board for about two and a half years, and no one's sung to us yet. So we appreciate your uniqueness and your words of wisdom and inspiring not only this board, but the entire city. On behalf of our superintendent and Board of Trustees, we thank you so very much for your wisdom.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a core of our members. Is Ms. Campbell on the line?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I am on the line, board members, but again, just so that everyone knows, I am out of town for work, and so I have an evening meeting that I must attend, but I am going to stay on the line as long as possible before that meeting.
Thank you. I'm now asked for adoption of the agenda.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt tonight's agenda. Questions? Comments, those in favor? Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you. Reading and approving of the minutes of the April 18th, 2017 regular meeting.
So moved, second.
Moved in second that we adopt the reading and approving of the minutes of our November, of our April 18th regular meeting. Questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're now down to public participation for general comments and on proposed policy issues.
Board members, you have several persons who have signed up to speak to you this evening. You have several folks who have asked to speak to you regarding student representation. You've got a couple of folks who have asked to speak to you regarding a personnel matter. The Callaway High School principal that I'm going to advise you, I think you need to hear an executive session, so I will go through those who would like to talk to you regarding student representation first.
Thank you.
Norcia Tobias.
Good evening.
My name is Norcia Tobias. I attend Jim Hill High School, where I'm in the 11th grade.
My name is Shamar Frey, and I also attend Jim Hill High School, where I'm a sophomore.
Well, today, I want to say, well, my comment on why students should be on the school board, this is because the student is the person that has the most input that's going on in the schools, and also because students see what's going on, and they can come back and tell you guys in some way they can, they can help us, you know, become a better district.
Well, I kind of put together a speech. I'm going to read it off. Okay. I'm Shamar Frey, and I stand before you today bringing greetings from Jim Hill High School, where I'm an ambitious sophomore. I'm excited about this opportunity to share my views about the importance of quality education and why having student representation on the school board can actually enhance schooling and public education. That old adage that says, "The more you go, the further you go," still rings true today. Our possibilities to strive and achieve are limitless when the right people do the right things to make education available for all people. Public education has a lot of challenges to overcome. I have a front-row seat view at problems that poverty, lack of home support, discipline issues, and inadequate funding can bring to schools. Students see a lot. We hear a lot, too. If anyone can add input to help school boards make education better for students, it is us. Allowing students to have a voice might just be the missing link, sorry. Best practices today would suggest that we get the opinion of the people we represent to find out their likes, dislikes, needs and wants, sorry. Doesn't this bill buy in? Wouldn't that likely cause students to want to conform? Wouldn't that make us feel heard instead of just told or made to do? Quality education is extremely important to our future, not just as one person, but collectively as a nation. Student voices actually being heard, will that actually work? What do you think?
Thank you.
My name is Cameron Lazard, and I attend Callaway High School. I am a sophomore at Callaway High School.
My name is Shakira Ponesta. I attend Prevent High School in the 11th grade. Well, I think we should have student representation on the school boards because we go to school every day, and we experience things that, you know, when y'all went to school, things have changed, so. Not calling you old anything. I'm just saying, you know, teachers have changed the rules, they teach have changed, and it has affected us a different way, and when we on the school, when we on the school board, we can come back and tell y'all what's wrong and how we can change it.
Okay, so I can tell you. Basically, we had a focus group the other day for all seven high schools, and we got input from every grade in our school to see what it's like, and we basically asked them questions like, "Do you feel safe in school? What do you feel like when you come to school?" I can tell you some of those comments if I can remember off the top of my head, but when we asked, "What do you feel when you come to school?", people said they feel depressed, heartbroken, everything, like, it was just like, wow, I never saw this before, but I'm just saying that having student representation on the school board can show you how it is like in school, because you don't see what's really happening right there, right now.
Okay, thank you.
Jordan Taylor.
We're doing two for one, aren't we? Good evening.
My name is Jordan Taylor, and I feel that students should be on the school representation because honestly, who knows how the students feel other than the students? And what I mean by that is, adults, they know what's good for the students, but I mean, it's something that you all, I guess, input that, you know, not really necessary. What I mean by that is, now, let me, let me level right on. For example, you know, the dress code, for example, are some, something that you all put, you know, it's okay, you know, we all agree on it, but it's some, like, for example, some people in our generation, they feel good coming to school with gym shorts on and sweatpants on, you know. In my school, we come with gym shorts on, we'll get sent right back out to school. And the cell phone policy, you know, it, it should be certain times where we should be able to use them, instead of, you know, even if they see it in your pocket, they'll take it. That's a little, you know, we feel that's a little too harsh, and so we feel, you know, a student from each school should be able to, you know, tell you all how we feel, and, and, you know.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Valerie King from Wingford High School, and I'm a sophomore, and I also be speaking on students being on the school board. And I come into research across the United States, there's a growing awareness that student voices matter a lot, and it turns out that this really actual sign that goes by, anything without us is not for us, which is really a great expert of learning and teaching in our schools, and I'm older before students are learning and beginning to ask, "Why isn't the student voice acknowledged?" Many fully involved students on the school board can ensure that students are more engaged with which ways academic achievements and, like anyone else, students have a valid opinion, knowledge, idea, and experience that a school board can benefit from. Now, having students on the school board can help ensure that adults, like parents, members of society, can actually know what is going on in our schools and within. Now, there's also a sign that goes like, anything about us, without us is not for us, like I just said, but now more than before, students are beginning to think or really say that this is, that sign is really for them, because they, they come to school every day, go by rules which are enforced by certain individuals that are not currently attending the schools and seeing the problems that the actual, that they're actually facing. So the bottom line is, having students on the school board can actually help the school system by not having to face issues that may have the students say, "Our voices are not heard," but instead, it can help the school board by raising, by, you know, helping out with certain precise, certain issues facing the public education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Rogers from Green Elementary, and I'm speaking on behalf of the district's P-16 council as a staff representative. At this week's P-16 council meeting, we discussed proposed policy BHAA dealing with student representatives to the JPS Board of Trustees and are in favor of its adoption. While the council acknowledges that there are some points that need further consideration, as a whole, we are agreed that this is a positive step forward for our district. Mr. Oppenheim, who's our newest member of the P-16 council, has been in communication with the group and has been able to speak to some of the most pressing questions we had regarding the election process, mentorships, and student representative expectations. One of the points we discussed at length was regarding the possibility of compensation for student representatives for their service to the board and the district. With the help of community partners, we would like to be able to offer some sort of small scholarship or post-graduation stipend for representatives. In this way, the district helps communicate the seriousness of the position, and the student is not simply serving as a volunteer to the board. We are cognizant of the fact that there are many responsibilities and expectations placed on the shoulders of our scholars and hope that this unique opportunity would stand out as something worthy of their highly unique energy and time. We recognize that this may take considerable effort to see completed, but are confident that some sort of incentive will be beneficial for all parties involved. We look forward to continued conversation regarding student representatives to the board and thank those who are working on the policy for their dedication to hearing the voices of all JPS stakeholders, especially the students we serve. And to the students who have already spoken, we would love for you to apply to be on the P-16 council, so email P16Jackson@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, the last two persons, Ms. Angela McAllister and Erin Shirley Orlley, I think need to address you in executive session.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just ask, is it about a specific person, or is it?
It's about the Callaway High School principal.
So we're now down to review of discipline cases. Ms., go ahead.
There are no cases for you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Madam President, if I could just ask about that, can we get updated data on suspensions and expulsions? I made a point that there were so many of them over the last three or four months, that I'd be curious about where we are in comparison to the previous year around this time, so if we could get some of that data updated, because I think it's probably been a few months since we've gotten updated data on suspensions and expulsions.
Okay. Are you sure?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes.
To relate to the, thank you, Madam President, as it relates to the, to this, to the discipline, the question I have is it has seemed like the list has grown. How is the PBIS being, has this?
Well, we, of course, you know, we have a PBIS department, and we train consistently. We train our teachers on PBIS. We are the list. Again, we can provide the specific data, but most importantly, we have to have safe and orderly schools. I mean, that's, that's a non-negotiable. We, we as adults have to provide, you know, we have to work with students, but ultimately, when there is behavior that exists that keeps us from being able to have a safe and orderly school, then we have to make decisions. No one wants to suspend students, but sometimes that's a reality, it's necessary, and I think if we look at the entire scope of the number of students that are suspended relative to the number of students in our district, I think that would be relatively low, but we would, we'll provide that information for you, but we've seen what things look like when you, when you have chaos, and we won't have chaos, so we have to have school.
Okay, so, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because this is not a question as it relates to violations or being non-compliant. As it relates to going forward, particularly as the MDEs begin to implement their new behavioral policy period, the question I was asking, really leaning toward, and I'm anxious to get the information going forward, is, are we doing those behavioral plans to ensure that we are with fidelity, you know, really instructing that student as well as that whoever accomplishes that, as well as that we're doing our, our part? So, so thank you so much for that, for those comments.
Yes, sir.
We're now down to the superintendent's report. Dr. Murray?
Good evening.
Evening.
At this time, we have a couple items for the superintendent's report. Dr. Sargent, first, of course, each meeting, we provide an update on our CAP. We've been doing a lot of work with our partners and with our CAP leaders, so Dr. Sargent will provide an update for this week.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In your board material, we provided an update on our facilities. We wanted to give you just an update in that area for tonight. What's coming around to you now is an updated report of that report, so it will show some, some projects that were not included in the report that we uploaded last week. And so we do have Ms. Robertson here to provide you with an overview of what's in the report and to answering the questions that you have at that time, and after that, I'll come back and finish our updates for the CAP. Ms. Robertson?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Dr. Murray?
Good evening.
You have in front of you an overview of the first 22 schools that were in the initial audit by MDE, and they are numbered in order of when we received the report, how the schools were listed. So I'll read through the first line, just to get you familiar with the report. School Leneer, initially, we had 121 findings. We've completed all 121. MDE has verified 119, so that means that MDE needs to come back out and verify the last two have been completed, and so we're 100% complete on our side, but we do need to have a follow-up inspection by MDE. So each school is listed with the total number of findings initially, how many we've completed to date, how many MDE has verified, and how many are incomplete, and we also have a column showing that what areas we're going to need some professional services or additional technical assistance from MDE, and most of those are windows not meeting life safety code. Several, we've been able to modify in-house by our carpentry staff, but some are too small to begin with, and I don't know when the fire code laws changed over the years as far as the, the size of a window that a school should have, but it has changed, and we have to modify accordingly to meet those fire code requirements. At the page two at the end, it'll show that in total of the 22 schools, we had initially 1,540 findings. We've completed 1,288, so that means 84% have been completed to date.
Right. So we anticipate the remaining 84 to be completed by?
We're rejecting by mid-June. We have been working several weekends to meet the expectations and to clear. Our largest schools like Callaway, we've worked the past three weekends, and that number's actually better at Callaway. I received an update at our 3 o'clock meeting, and I just didn't have time to update, update the numbers here.
Can you tell us, what's the status of the window project at Leneer?
We've completed Phase 1 and Phase 2, and that's where we received funding from the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, but there was one last remaining portion of the building that we did not receive funding for, and so those windows were about $70,000, $70,000 to complete, and since, you know, that would be a district project that we would have to pay for.
So that's not the street side?
Not the street side. That's the west side.
Okay.
Near the creek.
Right, and so, do we project how much it would cost to complete the window?
Our last decimal is $70,000.
$70,000, thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Oppenheim?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Thank you so much for presenting this. This is really very helpful. Can you just, I'm a little bit just confused by the, the header is, "Scope of Services for Professional and/or Technical Assistance from MDE." Is that what MDE is plan, is planning on doing, or is that our action?
It's our action. Either we need to have a profession, hire a professional to assist us, or we can ask a second question to MDE. One, in particular, Forest Hill, a comment was made that the football field was not level, and also that the gym floor was not level. So that's a matter of perception, possibly?
Explains a lot, right?
So, we, for that one, we want a technical assistance from MDE to say, "Is that something that we actually have to measure and need, or, you know, a football field has a crown? I don't know what's the perfect shape of a football field."
But, so then the suggested professional, not every one of these has a suggested professional in it, even though there might be notes in the technical assistance box, is, does that mean that we're going to fill that out and put in what the suggested professional support will be?
We haven't determined yet, yet, so like, for the Archives and History, for Davis Magnet, the two items that are remaining are the life safety code as far as the windows, and since it is an Archives and History building, we, we need to first discuss it with them before we even, you know, consider professional.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, members? Thank you.
Okay, just to round out our updates, the, the update we gave you this week on facilities is very similar to the updates you will start receiving on all the other process standards at our next meeting. After we've done, completed many of our internal audits, we're now in a position where we want to start collecting artifacts and reviewing evidence of those corrective action steps that have been completed, very similar to what we've done with facilities. And so the report that you'll receive for the other process standards from this point on will look very similar to this one. So if there are eight corrective actions that need to be completed for a particular standard, we're going to start looking at those actions that have been completed. For those that have been completed, we'll note those, as well as identify timelines for completion. And so that's the point where we're at with the completion of the other process standards, and that's what the updates will look like from this point moving forward.
Dr. Sargent, do you anticipate? Dr. Sargent, do you anticipate that some of these that are declared completed might regress, and something might happen, and they go back to being in an incomplete status? Or completed is completed?
As far as the facilities are in its standard, it, it depends. Some of the tasks in the, in the corrective action, once we complete, is done. Some things are a snapshot, for example, personnel. All of our principals have to be certified. At, well, at any point in time, a principal could resign, and something's going to happen where they're not certified. So some things are a snapshot, so at the time that, that we check it, it's, it's, you know, complete. But we have to make, that's the purpose of the internal audits and the monitoring, to make sure that once it's complete, it stays complete, and if we identify anything that's gotten it out of compliance, we need to get it back in compliance.
Okay. So you're monitoring any modifications that might happen?
On a daily basis. It's, it's ongoing at another end.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Sargent.
Okay. Our next presentation, several board members have requested an update from, from athletics. So tonight, we have the athletic department here to provide an update on athletics. Mr. Johnson.
Madam President.
Good evening.
Members, Dr. Murray, good evening.
Good evening.
I have some handouts and a PowerPoint as well. Before I get started tonight, I have with me two members of our team, Assistant Athletic Director Charles Wonsley and Assistant A.D. James Woody. We also have on our staff Administrator Secretary Ms. Ornette Purvis Jackson and Secretary Ms. LaJevia Morris. I just kind of want to give you just a little update here. I will not try to go through all the information that you have on the printed copy. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me or email me. On the next slide, in preparation for the upcoming school year, and we're talking about 2016, 2017, we'll start in June. Our football coaches, they start with 707 football, summer basketball by girls and boys coaches, summer baseball, and volleyball, softball, band cheer and drill, usually do individual and group practices. July 25th, that's the official start date for practice for softball and volleyball. Just to give you an idea of when our coaches start in getting prepared for the upcoming school year. August 1st, that's the official practice for cross-country football and swimming. I wanted to talk tonight, you know, we always talk about the major sports. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, sports that, you know, not always talked about. Cross-country, we hosted eight cross-country meets. We had an outstanding cross-country runner, and he placed, he's on the state all, second team all-state, he's from Callaway. We do have one swim team here in the district, and one of the students made it to the regional swim meet, and that is, that swim team is located at Murrah. Girls and boys powerlifting, that's available at all high schools. Several schools participate. If you remember, the Jim Hill Girls 2016 team won the class-three state championship. Soccer, Pro Van girls and boys teams participated in the playoffs this past fall. One girls player recently signed a scholarship to play at the college level from Pro Van. Tennis, currently, several schools have students participating in the 2017 state tennis tournament, and that's going to be May 9th through the 11th. Girls and boys from Jim Hill, Leneer, Murrah, Pro Van, and they'll be participating in events, the singles, doubles, and mixed doubles. Track and field, currently, girls and boys teams are working and practicing from Callaway, Forest Hill, Jim Hill, Leneer, Murrah, and Pro Van. They have advanced to the state track meet, and that's going to be held May 6th and 8th at Pearl High School. Golf, we have one golfer that has advanced to the state golf tournament, and that's going to, that's being held in Tupelo. This young man is a 10th grader at Jim Hill High School. Fast pitch, that's a spring sport. Four high schools participated this spring, Forest Hill, Jim Hill, Murrah, and Wingfield.
Mr. Johnson, before you go to the next slide, I wanted to ask you, where do, where do students play golf?
We have an agreement with Sonny Guy on Woodrow Wilson, and also LaFleur's Bluff. Students practice at Sonny Guy. We play matches there as well. We had our city golf championship at LaFleur's Bluff.
Okay. Do you ever play at Grove Park?
We, we have the opportunity to, but we haven't played there yet.
Okay.
Actually, one of our coaches is a Grove Park person. He loves Grove Park, but we haven't, we haven't been over there yet.
Okay. All right, sir, go ahead.
Athletic department duties and responsibilities, and I'll just share a few of those with you all. We supervise, monitor, support, and communicate with middle and high school coaches and school administrators from 13 middle schools and seven high schools. We coordinate district-wide preseason meetings with all coaches, sponsors, and band directors, purchase, store, and distribute equipment and supplies for all 82 high school sports programs and all 78 middle school sports programs. We respond and investigate complaints and concerns from relating to Title IX, high school activity association concerns, school concerns, parent concerns, and community concerns. I'm going to move on to the next page, to the next slide. That's a continuation of duties and responsibilities. On the next slide, please. We supervise, we also supervise, train, monitor, and schedule ticket staff for middle and high school football, basketball, and track. Over the course of a school year, over 2,000 JPS student athletes, girls and boys, will participate in over 780 games and events. In middle school, over 1,800 students will participate in over 200 games and events. Some students participate, of course, in more than one sport. Band, drill, and cheer, over 900 total participants at high schools and over 700 at the middle school level. For example, this is not from this school year, this is from 2014, 15. Over $10,000 was brought in as a result of JPS high school basketball teams playing in the basketball state tournament. Teams get a portion of the gate as they play in the sessions at the state tournament. This year, the tournament sites were Jackson State University and also the Mississippi Coliseum. So we have not received our share yet, not sure how much it's going to be, but we had several teams down there this year. So that is a, 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 a great fundraiser for our teams, and that money goes back to the teams, you know, as, as a reward for them working hard and getting to that point. Over $12,000 in high and middle school track and field ticket sales along with revenue for other high school sports that participated in the state playoffs. Per auditor for 2014, 15, ticket sales were over $537,000. We collected and deposited over $27,000 from our concessions that we hold at the football games. For instance, we purchased Pepsi, and the concession people, parents, give us, they purchased that from us, and from that, we make, you know, it's not a whole lot of money, but there's some money. But we purchase the drinks, the parents, we keep them cold for the parents, so they don't have to bring ice to sale at the concession stands, and so that gives them an opportunity to sell the drinks for a little bit more without having to purchase the ice. I think we pay like a buck 25 for the drinks, and the parents sell them for $2, so they make 75 percent, 75 cent profit. And that concession stand opportunity goes to the organization that is appointed by the principal. The principal say, well, for this home game, Callaway and Murrah, Callaway's the home team, my football booster club is going to run the concession stand. And so funds made by the booster club should, and we have meetings and we talk about it, should be spent back on the kids.
How is that done? A policy on that? I don't get that.
We do have a policy, Ms. Mil... We do have a policy on that, and I meet with parents prior to the season. We go over the policy. We encourage them on, on routines and procedures to use to ensure that the money is received and used properly. So it's, it's a lot of trust that goes on, as you can see.
You don't believe in trusting, but verifying.
I have a question.
Not, when you said verifying, not looking at receipts or-
Yes.
Anything like that, no. No, we don't do that, because I think it's our stance to, to, to be, well, it's, it's not our money coming from the CFO. But we try to strongly encourage them to, to use it on the students, and we, we monitor it, but there's not much that we can do to punish them, but I have not seen any incidents where the money was being misused. I can say that.
Yes, Jones.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you, Madam President. There should be at least some point where we all sit down with, and really discuss that. Reason being is because of the thing they call in the, in the, in the deal is called equitable, and so we want to ensure that whatever funds that are being dispersed by the booster club is, is being dispersed or provided in an equitable way. And then we also, as a, because the JPS name is being used or what have you, to raise these funds, we have to, with fidelity, look at the books, so to speak. But, so we'll, we'll discuss that and kind of break all that down. I have a question for you, though. When will the 15, 16 numbers be available?
I am waiting on the auditor. He's still working on them.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. The other question, too, we mentioned about in terms of the number of students that participated thus far, how many of those students are, are qualified through the clearinghouse?
Through the clearinghouse?
Yes, sir.
Basically-
Junior, senior, specifically.
Well, I'm, I'm not aware of that number. I'm not-
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know that number. That's going to be at the school level. Usually, a senior counselor handles that, but I'm not aware of it.
Okay. I know that the entrance requirements have changed, and so I know there's a lot of concerns as it relates to-
Yes.
Students, or students in general, particularly student athletes, being positioned, particularly without a lot of Title IX Olympic sports. How, you probably want to cover this later on in your presentation, so I'll, I'll reserve or defer to that after you finish. Okay.
Again, the next slide is duties and responsibilities. We can move on to JPS high schools. This is just a breakdown of the number of paid coaching slots in sports per high school. Total of 201 paid coaching slots, 82 sports programs. We have volunteers at every, for every sport. There's a certification process that they have to go through, and that's offered through the National Federation of High Schools if they're not a certified teacher. Just to let you know, for high schools, we have a tournament for tennis to identify a JPS champion, JPS championship in track and field, a spring break baseball tournament is hosted every year, a JPS cross-country championship, championships in JPS, in JV basketball and football, and a JPS golf championship. Other tournaments that we put on, we put on high school Orsman Jordan Tournament, which is held in November, the Pepsi JPS Tournament, which is held in December, and the end-of-season tournaments, usually one or two of our schools will host their district basketball tournament. At the middle school level, we have a championship for every sport offered at the middle school. So we'll crown a champion every year for every sport, and for high school and middle school, trophies are included when we crown the champion and also the runner-up.
Mr. Johnson, what's the percentage of girls that are participating in sports activity across the JPS? Do you have any idea?
When you talk about, when you look at the total population of middle school and high school, seven, grade seven through five, I'm going to take a guess and say probably maybe 40%, 40, 35 to 40%.
Girls?
Yes.
What's the predominant sport that they are participating in?
Basketball, volleyball, softball, fast pitch and slow pitch, soccer. We have a girl soccer team at six of our seven high schools. In middle school, soccer is coed, so there's boys and girls. I think the young lady that did the pledge, she was a member of the Blackburn soccer team. Tennis, boys and girls tennis. Girls track, every high school team has a track team. Every middle school has a girls' track team.
Terrific. Thank you. Yes. Mr. Jones, and then Ms. Oppenheimer.
I'm glad you mentioned tennis. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear about that. How are we, how are the participation, particularly the courts? I, I've been hearing a lot of concerns about the courts. So I guess the question is, how competitive are our teams are as relates to, to, to the condition of our courts?
Well, you know, surprisingly, our high school teams are very competitive. The middle schools are very competitive, but as far as the high schools being able to practice on their site, the, the tennis courts are, you know, they're in need of repair. They're in need of repair. So we thank Tennis Center South for allowing us to use their courts when we playing, you know, our games. Jim Hill High School is probably the only JPS school right now that can host a tennis match, because they have courts that are playable.
Okay.
As far as middle school, we have several middle schools that, most middle schools can host, except for Northwest, and I believe Chastain and Kersey, simply because they only have one court.
The other question, too, is going back to the, the college prep or college qualifying. What, what type of efforts or what type of planning is, is being put in place to, to assist or encourage the taking of ACT early, being, you know, prepped and ready, because there, that is a process. And, and, and I noticed the numbers, and, because I watched the signings, because I know there's an opportunity for one of our, our very own to position themselves, and so I guess I'm curious to know how the coaches, you know, relate, relationship going, particularly with the changes required with the clearinghouse and number of prospects. I know, you know, a coach really can't, even from community college all the way through, can't talk to a player or talk to a prospective player if they haven't, you know, qualified. So what are we doing in that regards?
Yeah, you know, as a principal, former principal, that's what I, you know, I know that, you know, when a coach comes into the building, he doesn't go see the student first. He goes straight to the council's office, and we, we understand that. So even in our interviews, if I'm interviewing a coach for any sport, one of the questions is going to be, tell me about, tell me what you know about the new eligibility for incoming freshmen. What's going to help them? Okay? Another question is going to be, Coach, tell me about your plan to keep your students on course to graduate. So all this is a part of the, the hiring process and the interview process, you know, because we know how important it is. So coaches are expected to have a, a grade check in place every two weeks or so forth, and, and the principals are on board with this as well. And as far as eligibility information, I believe just a few, maybe a couple of weeks ago, Coach, Coach Woody got some information together concerning the eligibility for students. So we're always having that conversation and with the coaches, you know, this- So we're always having that conversation, uh, and with the coaches, you know, it's, it's no longer that coach with the short pants on, long socks and whistle. They got to know, you know, what's going on, how to get kids eligible, uh, stay, how, how to get kids to stay eligible in school and also how to get these kids eligible to play their freshman year. So that's something that, that we constantly talk about and always say that when you're looking at our student athletes, uh, all those kids are eligible out there. All those kids have a C or above average. So we have to, as coaches and teachers and administrators, we have to continue to push those kids to do better and excel.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that and we, and it also includes your cheerleaders because they fall upon to that same
Exactly.
The same deal, okay.
Fan members as well.
Absolutely. So, so that's, that's, that's a huge thing that we need to make sure that we are meeting because it, it, and we probably have a sound conversation, but there's a number of, um, high-level coaches, you know, I speak with and one of the things they want to make sure is that our people are, 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 are made to be talked to. Okay, the other question I have is, and this is the last two, is, um, as it relates to, um, the upcoming fields, I knows that, uh, Wingfield, uh, made the playoffs and so on, uh, this previous year. And then how does
In football, yes.
Football, football, yes. Um, and how are we progressing in that area? Are there any major needs that, 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 that need to be addressed as it relates to the field, particularly as mentioned in the audit report about the field down at Forest Hill being on level? And, uh, but we, we, you know, so that piece. Then the other piece, um, how is that foundation you mentioned last time you talked to us? How are they looking at, um, or do we do ACT prep workshops for our student athletes, much like our other competing, uh, uh, programs?
Well, what we have in high school now, we have the, we have ACT, uh, prep classes and, and, and that really has helped us in, uh, in the high school. Um, you mentioned Wingfield, uh, the, the quarterback from that team was offered a scholarship by the University of Memphis.
Yes.
And he has, has recently qualified to, uh, play as a freshman. But, uh, in the high schools, we have the ACT prep classes, uh, we have the teachers that, that, uh, that's teaching that class now and, uh, that has, has really helped, uh, as far as increasing the ACT score. And I, I hope that answered your question.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Oppenheimer?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I'm really curious, so I know generally speaking, ath, students who participate in athletics tend to graduate at higher rates. Do we keep data that tracks, um, students who start out participating in athletics and for whatever reason either become ineligible or stop participating versus kids who go all the way through in order to understand why students might, might, may no longer be, um, eligible or participate and whatnot?
Right. Uh, I've heard of a lot of instances like that, but as far as having data on that, no, we don't, we don't keep any data on that.
Because I, so I think it would be really helpful to track how many of our students who maybe either start out as freshmen or even from middle school, since we have the middle school athletics, to really be able to track that so that we know, uh, the positive effects that being a student athlete might have, um, on graduation outcomes for our kids. The second, the second piece, um, I think is a little, a little bit more complicated in my head, uh, and so I try to frame this, uh, properly. So you have a, you have a relatively large staff, uh, staff for your department, right? You have four support staff, um, I know I've
You've got about the five people that I
Right, 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 right. And I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it, you know, I think about our CAOs, I think about some of our other departments who aren't athletics, who don't get quite as much public attention. Um, so I'm curious about the difference in the roles of the ver, of the assistant athletic directors, um, kind of what they do and then how it contributes to kind of the larger picture of athletics and student, uh, graduation.
Okay. Uh, for every sport, of all the games and activities that I talked about, uh, transportation has to be scheduled. We tread, we, we schedule the transportation. For every event we host, officials have to be, uh, scheduled. For each sport, schedules have to be created. Uh, that's what we're doing right now, is creating schedules for the upcoming year. And we have to confirm those schedules with the schools that we're playing, not just the schools in JPS, but outside the schools. Coach Wonsley handles, uh, transportation, uh, when, when schools, uh, travel thirty miles or more outside of Jackson, we set up meals for them. Coach Wonsley handles that. So he has to contact, uh, the restaurant and set up the meals. Uh, transportation has to, you have to communicate. We'll, we'll set it up in the computer, but we also have to follow up. Uh, when the bus may not be there, he's going to get that call. And, you know, sometimes they return, you know, late at night if something happens, either I'm going to get the call or Coach Wonsley is going to get the call. Coach Wonsley is a C to C person also. Uh, right now, uh, the High School Activity Association, last couple of years went to online eligibility. Each coach has to put their information in online. It's pulled from SAMs. So it is correct. Nobody can, can kind of play with it and make it higher or lower. It comes directly from SAMs. So we have to train all of our coaches and all of the school ADs on how to use it. And Coach Wonsley is the designated, uh, person throughout the district, in the district to train everybody on that system. Coach Wonsley and, and, and also Coach Wonsley works with the, uh, high school sports and middle school sports. Coach Woody works mainly with the middle school sports, uh, right now. He's working with tennis. We're having a tennis championship right now down at, uh, Tennis Center South, uh, and we don't, that's between Cardozo and, uh, and, uh, Brinkley. So we don't know one, somebody, somebody's going to call us and let us know. But, uh, Coach Wonsley also, uh, works with the warehouse. We have over two thousand items in our warehouse, in our athletics warehouse, and we have to make sure that, uh, we have supplies in when coaches order. We keep every supply or piece of equipment that each one of the sports, uh, programs need, programs need, we have it in the warehouse and there's a system that they have to go through to order. It has to be written down on a requisition form. My secretary has to input it and the coaches have to pull it from the warehouse. Again, uh, Coach Woody is responsible for, uh, inventory, making sure that everything is up to date, that we have the right equipment in place. Uh, we just finished, uh, re, uh, conditioning helmets. Every other year, football helmets have to be reconditioned, uh, they have to be checked to make sure that they are safe. So we have to make sure that, uh, we're getting those helmets in, that they're getting checked. Uh, we all work together. I, I can't specifically say what each person do. Do we need more help? Yes, we need more help, but we're going to make, do with what we got right now. Uh, there's a number of things that, that, that we all have to do, you know, there's, there's follow-up, uh, and everything that has to be done, uh, and I'm just glad to have the staff that I have. The high school sports, that, that's a, that's a big part of what we do. Uh, you know, on a basketball season night, we'll have, Monday night, we'll play middle school basketball, Tuesday night, we play high school, Wednesday night, we play JV basketball, Thursday night, we play middle school, Friday night, we play high school, Saturday night, Saturday night, we may have another high school game. So we try to get out and at least take a look at a quarter of two, of a game each night to make sure that, you know, if we're evaluating our coaches, then we have to get out to see them play to, you know, effectively evaluate them. On the football, uh, during the football season, Mondays, we got JV football, Tuesday, we got middle school football, Wednesday, we have middle school football, may have a Thursday night, high school game, Friday nights mainly are the high school football nights. So we're, we're pretty busy. We're rolling, you know, pretty good. And tennis is played almost every, every night through the tennis season.
Thank you, um, Mr. Johnson.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Coach Johnson. Um, I appreciate this report. There's two things that I would like for, um, that was not mentioned, and that's the overall condition of our facilities. We just had the CAP report talking about the, the basketball field, the basketball court at Forest Hill and the field at Forest Hill. But the overall condition of all our fields and facilities, are they up to standard? And then my second level question is, um, I believe we as a group probably need to develop, um, a plan for ongoing, uh, servicing, development, improvements of, uh, specifically our football fields and facilities in terms of not only what we can do, but in terms of sponsorship and what sponsors can do to assist our teams, our facilities, where we can host larger, um, events where they can be income generating for us. So I would like for you to talk to that if you have a plan, um, where, where are we and who's a part of bringing those thoughts together and how do we proceed?
Okay, let, let me first, uh, I want to thank Dr., Dr. Lynn. We have formed a committee, uh, to look at, uh, raising funds specifically for athletics and specifically for facilities. We are also, uh, in the process of, of meeting with the City of Jackson to, to, uh, put together a partnership to upgrade some of the local baseball fields and softball fields. Uh, as you know, JPS does not own a baseball field. We initially thought about, uh, building a field at Capital City, which is our own property, but that would have been only one facility, one baseball field and one softball field. So we decided to, to, to get together and, and, and submit a request, a proposal to the City of Jackson to upgrade, uh, Michael D. Johnson Baseball Field, um, Forest Hill Baseball Field, Battlefield Baseball Field and Grove Park Baseball Field. We feel that we can make a faster, uh, quicker impact by upgrading those fields that are already here and standing. As far as the football fields, uh, of course, we, we do need to upgrade. Uh, we do need to upgrade and I think our committee, uh, we're going to go to our vendors, the vendors that we, uh, uh, deal with every day. Uh, we're going to go to them and specifically ask them for funds for athletic facilities. So if we can get a, a, a vendor to sponsor and say, well, we're going to make, uh, uh, Newell Field or let's say Hughes Field, we're going to call it, uh, not Hughes Field, but it could be Pepsi Stadium. We'll put that out there. But we definitely, uh, need to upgrade our facilities, uh, basketball as well. When we talk about the gym floors, uh, we do need to, to get on a rotation to, to just upgrade our, our gym floors as well. But again, I want to thank Dr. Lynn and we have a number of community members, board members, uh, Mr. Jones, Ms. Burke, uh, that, Dr. Murray, that's a part of that committee. And we have, uh, you know, we, we, we are on fire about, you know, uh, upgrading the facilities and we just going to, we're going to keep doing it. We're going to keep doing it until we get it done because our kids deserve the best. And I've, you've heard some things that I talked about, what our kids are doing in the playoffs and so forth. And, and, and these are, how can I say it? These are what, uh, these kids are doing this with, with facilities that are not, you know, uh, on par with, with the people that they are competing with.
We'll have one final question before we move on.
All right, thank you. Um, how will Bill Haven and Lyssia, their field, impact Newell Field? Were we getting any revenues from, when they were using that, using Newell Field? Bill Haven, University, since there have kind of added
No, no, we're not getting anything.
Okay.
No.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. And, uh, that ends the superintendent's report, but just to note, as a part of, of the CAP, uh, we stated that we would have an, an assessment, a facilities assessment that is underway. So we'll have, eventually we'll have an assessment of all of our buildings and we'll be able to provide, uh, that information relative to every building in our district.
We'll now proceed to information items only. A, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, Dr. Murray, other members of the board. Before you are the review of Section E policies, which are the support services policies. There's roughly about twenty-nine or thirty policies that are up for review. Uh, these policies, um, deal with our plants and our facilities, which you all have been talking about, and also with safety. The first policy is EA, which is the goals and objectives. And of course, that policy says that the district will maintain its buildings to the best of its ability, um, and facilities in good repair and, uh, schedule maintenance when it's appropriate and, uh, feasible for the district to do so. You also have the procedures for emergency drills and schools, each school in the district has to formulate and have, uh, emergency drills. We also have a policy that deals with, uh, traffic and parking controls and that policy provides that children who leave the buildings and enter the buildings, um, are provided safe coverage. Uh, it also allows the administration to provide parking regulations for vehicles that come onto campus and outlines the procedure that needs to be followed when there's an accident involving a school district vehicle. And also says that, uh, if there's some negligence on the part of a driver with a district vehicle, that could be caused by disciplinary action. And I know the board has asked about that on several occasions. The other po, policy that I do want to just highlight is EBA and that is the policy that deals with the safety programs. And that policy speaks to a variety of issues as it relates to students on campus. It requires, uh, teachers and other staff members to supervise, uh, students who are on campus. It requires them not to be left alone and not to, uh, be on campus thirty minutes prior to, oh, the opening of school. And it also speaks to the transportation of students on school-sponsored events. And I do want to tell you that, um, our P-16 council, uh, had a comment and some suggestions for revisions to this particular policy because, uh, while we are putting the policies up for review, uh, P-16 knows what section is going to come before you. So they've been very, uh, mindful about sharing their thoughts. One of the considerations that they just asked, uh, us to look at was our policy actually says that students have to be transported to school-sponsored events by a school vehicle, a district vehicle. Transportation has to be provided. But, um, they pointed out that sometimes that's inconvenient for parents who want to either follow their students, uh, to the event and then may have to, uh, have arrangements for the child and the family to go somewhere else following that school-sponsored event. And so they wanted us to consider, uh, whether or not parents could take the child home, uh, with them after the event or at least ride, uh, to the event, uh, in the parent's car, whether, rather than, um, district, uh, transportation. So that is something that, uh, the, the administration is looking at and you may see a revision to that policy. Additionally, your policies deal with field trips, uh, and we have a procedure for how fields, field trips are governed. Uh, also the special uses of school buses, that's pretty defined by statute as to, uh, who can and who cannot use, uh, our buses. And of course, we also have a policy that deals with food service management and how they are to follow the regulations and they do such a good job of that, uh, that's set forth by the federal government. So these policies are just, uh, before you for review and as we continue to go through them, the staff and I will bring back any necessary revisions. And also there's a couple of duplications or deletions that we have to recommend.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Yes.
Thanks, Madam President. Um, just to follow up on my question about the policy EBB on building and ground security. I know MDA, uh, sorry, MDA. MDE's policy, you know, gives us guidance that it could be two years before somebody is trained to do security or campus enforcement at our schools. I would hope that at some point soon, the board could consider strengthening it as long as we don't weaken what MDE policy is, um, because, uh, I kind of find it, um, uh, I don't know if tragic's the right word or horrifying that we could have somebody who's not fully trained, working with our students in a enforcement type of, um, way and they're not fully trained and they have two years to do that. I would hope that we could think about, uh, I would hope that we could think about shrinking that timeline somehow. So I'll make sure to follow up on that.
Yes, yes, we will look at that as well.
Hey, one question. Okay, thank you. Thank you for what you do, turn to Shepherd. The question there in terms of student medication, I noticed that the student has to administer. How, how do, or what is the process with our nurses as it relates to exceptional cases? How are we handling that or in this property answer at the next meeting or what have you? Not tonight?
Yes. Mr. Jones, that's a very good question. We have specifically another policy that is in the student section that actually specifies how students can self-administer medication. And of course, particularly if students have, suffer from asthma or allergies and they are allowed to have their EpiPens with them. And that policy has specific, those two policies have specific guidelines where the parent has to provide a note from the doctor and it goes to the office and the dosage and the administration is all kept up with. I believe the safety policy deals with just first aid and just not the specific direct administration outside of those other two policies that are actually in the student section in J.
Okay.
So I think that's kind of a broader focus, the safety policy that you're looking at now.
Okay, thank you.
We're now down to update on MDE's At-Risk Action Plan. Dr. Sargent.
Tonight, we're going to provide you with an update on our school improvement efforts for our At-Risk Schools, for all of the elementary schools, as well as a portion of the middle schools. So at this time, we'll start with our elementary division.
Good evening, Dr. Murray, Ms. Burke, members of the board.
Evening.
You did receive the updates for May 2, School At-Risk Updates. And I will give you a brief synopsis of the updates in the various categories. There are five categories that I will give you an overview. Under leadership, all school leaders have continued their intensified efforts to support third through fifth grade students to ensure academic success on MAP, the Mississippi Assessment Program. Principals continue to provide extra time, opportunities for teachers and students to engage in specific strategies and content areas to improve students' understanding of the standards. Principals continue to review lesson plans and conduct classroom observations to give instructional support, feedback, and provide resources. Principals are continuously seeking highly qualified staff for the upcoming school year. Under curriculum and instruction, support, school support staff continues to provide additional support to students. Classroom structures have been established to allow for more explicit small group instruction. Teachers and principals are consistently reviewing data and making informed instructional decisions. Under the area of professional development, ongoing professional development opportunities are being provided by the principals. At Galloway, Board, and Van Winkle, we do have external partners who are continuing to coach, model lessons, provide PD and data analysis, and lesson planning to teachers. Under the area of climate and safety, the continuation and reinforcement of positive behavior is occurring in all schools. In some of the schools, you have adopters and community partners who are supporting the school's efforts by providing incentives and special recognition to students. And under the area of assessment, all schools are utilizing MDE's practice test and other formatted practice items. Students have been given opportunities to practice online. And the participation rate of MAP, which is ongoing now, is being closely monitored by the principal as well as myself to ensure that we meet the minimum requirement of assessing 95% of the students.
That question?
Mr. Jones.
All right, thank you. At Galloway, how has the collaboration with, is Operation Shoestring in there?
Yes.
Okay. How is that, that process working to increase that student growth in terms of, how are they, how's their relationship going?
Right, I'll ask Dr. G. Bradley to come forward to answer that question.
Thank you. Good evening.
Our collaboration with Operation Shoestring continues to be very, very strong. What it looks like in direct support of student achievement and growth at this stage is continued collaboration with specific targeted students, extending tutorial even at the Operation Shoestring site, providing Operation Shoestring staff with resources, in some cases, professional development opportunities even through our site council meetings, so that even at the Operation Shoestring site with students and through parent meetings, parents are being trained also. An extension of what it looks like for sample MAP items. We did that also in preparation for our third graders when they were tested not too long ago. And then we follow up to be able to see progress that is being made. We also have students that are traveling to Brown Elementary School to also work collaboratively with that staff and those students. So there is an encouragement beyond just the content, but we are also targeting motivation of our students.
Okay, so within that, you've already given, excuse me, has directors been provided saying these are the areas where these students that you have pulled will need X, you know, X support or, you know, for those?
Absolutely. In terms of interventions?
Yes.
For those students who need extra support in specific targeted standards, as well as enrichment for those students who are demonstrating success. But we want to continue to maintain that as well as increase it at all, at all costs.
Okay, thank you so much.
How many students are we talking about at Operation Shoestring?
We have 75 students that are in the testing grades of third through fifth, 150 students total.
Right, thank you. All right.
One other question regarding Span. Question, Span. As we look at Span, I notice in the comments that the FIT meeting is happening. What is that looking like for the?
Mrs. Minotti.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Your question is, how are we conducting FIT team meetings? Well, we have one every two weeks at Span. And for a while, we were doing groups, you know, like grade level teams. But my assistant principal and I decided after the STAR assessment, the one that we progress monitored everybody, and we decided to meet with each teacher individually and go student by student. A couple of, last month, we invited Mr. Drain from the Accountability Office over, and he spent about four hours with us at Span, and we went student by student. So we, that's kind of the process we followed because it worked so well with him that we decided to try it, and it has worked pretty well. You know, we took all of the numbers with the students and then after we had the FIT team meeting individually, we identified the students that we were going to put in our boot camp. And most teachers had to volunteer, and they spent 20 days from 2:30 to 4:30 for those 20 days and volunteered to tutor those specific students. The parents signed forms and came and, you know, they came and picked them up. It was, it was great. And then we wanted to make sure that we're targeting those specific students. And what we're seeing is a lot of growth. And so what we did was we identified the students who were not making growth, and we, we actually felt like it was fourth grade math where they were not making the growth they needed. So everybody is tutoring fourth grade math, including me, which is, may not be a good thing, I'm not sure, but I'm out there. But we, well, we all are, we're all working with a group of students in the afternoon because we want to make sure those kids are making growth because we think that's our best shot. We're not aiming to be a D, we're aiming to be a C.
Okay. One other question, if I may. With the, with the students that you have pulled and definitely using, you know, the plan, how has the technology assisted you in growing that, in that space?
The technology we have right now?
Yes.
Well, what we've done is, one, the district purchased ATI, the Assessment Program. We have, not made, I guess we encouraged our teachers to schedule a test per month for their class at least because we only have one small computer lab that has 19 computers in the library, and then we have a cart with the computer. So we had them schedule it. And what we did was we gave the students the test on pencil and paper. We took the test from ATI, gave them the pencil paper test, and they did great. So the very next day, we gave them the same exact test on the computer, and they bombed it. They really did, and we have the evidence to show it. So what we did was we started encouraging the teachers to teach them how to use the tools and the different things on the test. So Ms. Torrey, my assistant principal and I, we scheduled our observations of the teachers while they were teaching them how to take an online test. And so what we did with the, now, we've taken the sample test from MDE, and we took computers and we had them practice how to do it. And we also sent something home to the parents, and we have parents working with them at home also. Now, MDE has loaned us a set of 30 Chromebooks that are Questar Chromebooks, and we are using those for testing just because technology is an issue.
Okay. Are all the smart boards working as really, or not? Okay.
No, sir. We have an order in, what has happened is the smart boards are dying and they cannot be fixed. So we have ordered smart panels to replace them where there's no fan or bulb in it. We ordered them, but we haven't gotten them yet. So we've, we've been creative. You can move a whole class before you can move a smart board. So we just kind of rotated through.
I got you. And so with that, and this is the last question related to that, will this new panel enable you to integrate the new clicker that's able for a student to push and click and drag, you know, until we get all these other things kind of lined out? Or do you, do you have that access in your, in your, in your space?
I'm not sure.
Okay, okay.
I know that what we're doing with the panels, I guess this is maybe what you're asking, we give each kid an individual laptop.
Sure.
And the teacher does the, whatever they're doing on the smart panel, and then the students are doing it on the laptops at the same time.
Okay.
And they've gotten really good at it. In fact, now they're coming up and fixing whatever we break.
I got you. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Oppenheimer?
Thanks, Madam President. I was just going to ask Dr. King, can you kind of talk about, you know, maybe one example or two examples of new practices, absolutely new practices that we, one of our schools or any of our schools weren't doing before this process started? And kind of talk about if it's had any effect, any change in either the potential outcome or, yeah, outcomes.
Okay, I can ask a couple of the principals to come up if you would like. Let me, let's go to Bowett because she did, she didn't highlight her new practices in here. And so I ask her to come up and inform you about the new practices. Dr. Bradley.
Good afternoon. One new practice that we've done is a podcast. So for our third graders, because it's a big deal for them, it's a new test, we had our teachers, our third grade teachers, to kind of video themselves going through a content standard. And so we got, parents would come during parent-teacher conference and give us their email addresses, and we emailed those videos to them along with the handouts on how they can help their children at home. So it was pretty much scripted. So that's a new practice that we've implemented this year. We won't know the results until May 10th, so we're hopeful that it'll go over well. And parents were excited about it.
Cool, thank you. Maybe like one more would be helpful. It's just, I think my point and my goal is I want, I want to hear what's new that's coming out of this and coming out of this process that's not necessarily just doing the same ones.
Some highlighted their new practices and others did not. So I'll go down the list. Dr., Ms. Sutton?
Oh, we don't have to do the whole list. Maybe just like one more. Thank you.
At Lake, we're very data-driven. So some, some different things that we've done is we've seen that students have an issue in writing, okay, with that process. So we provided some morning tutorial. I provide morning tutorial as well as teachers provide morning tutorial early in the morning. And we're trying to make learning fun. Some of our parents have communicated that, you know, they have some issues with understanding the standards and what we're sending home. So we did have a family game night. And the family game night was centered around the standards, looking at the blueprint or the interpretive guide and looking at the heavily weighted standards. And so we show parents practical ways and things that they can do at home to make learning fun using practical games, Connect Four, Twister, you know, things of that nature to engage their students at home with learning and test prep.
Thank you.
Dr. Lynn?
Yes. Dr. King, the instructor or the principal at Timberlawn, there was something that she did that seems to be, or at least it caught my attention, she had some book study sessions. And I want to, if she could come and tell us, because she actually didn't just assign the book, but she assigned the chapters that she wanted those teachers to, to read. And I kind of want to know what was the outcome, because one of those chapters was got stress.
Yes, sir.
I kind of want to see what came out of that.
Before she comes, that's actually at Dr. Merritt's school, and he's going to briefly give you a synopsis of that school, and she's here to come up. But I do want to make the notation that we have received the first school visit report from MDE. And so you will see some modifications, those recommendations that were made by that visit will be implemented in the next phase. And so we have received our first school visit report from MDE, and so the, and the principals have those reports in their hands. So you'll see some changes. And I know Ms. Oppenheimer asked that question. So you'll see some differences in, in the reporting as well. So Dr. Merritt will come up and bring it.
If I may, as you, as you're exiting, and thank you so much for what you're doing. The Jackson Highs Library has set up eBooks for the reading list that, that we have. So for those parents, library card, they have to download those books that are on our, I think probably three or four titles may not be in that list. So, so all the books that, on their readers, I think it's 900 plus that are available through a eBook download through the Jackson Highs Library.
Awesome. We'll make sure the principals are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, good evening. Dr. Murray, Ms. Burke, and Board. I'm here to provide an update on Timberlawn, where the principal is Dr. Jamella Johnson. So under leadership, to get to your point, Dr. Lynn, Dr. Johnson has taken a strategic approach to focus, one, on classroom environment as well as teacher leadership. So she has, Monday is a professional development day. And so they're, look, they're studying class, conscious classroom management as it relates to the teachers. And she's doing the 10-minute presentations by Todd Whitaker and Annette Bro, where they are focusing on supporting teachers. So we have to manage the classroom and then figure out the ways to be effective in the classroom. And Dr. Johnson, once I go through your report, you feel free to come up. So that's what she's doing under leadership. As it relates to curriculum and instruction... As it relates to curriculum and instruction, she's did something very innovative. This period, teachers, if you review the, the report, she used, two teachers made videos on instructional practices and they shared them with other teachers as well as some of the lead teachers from the curriculum department have gone in and co-taught with some of the teachers as well as lead interventionists and our lead people have provided support in classroom management. And so that was something very innovative that she done, that she did as relates in the area of curriculum and instruction. The professional development in which I still connect with leadership is just what she's done with the, the book studies. As it relates to climate and safety, one thing that she has done, they have reduced the number and there was a focus on reducing the number of out-of-school suspensions. They've been very successful in that. Also, she implemented a positive behavioral referral system. So since that was implemented in March, she has received one hundred of those reports to where teachers are giving her, instead of a bad referral on a student, they're submitting positive behavior referrals on students and she has a way of recognizing and celebrating those students for their behavior. As it relates to assessment, she's held, holding weekly fit meetings. One thing, we, of course, we don't know the outcomes as of yet, but based on we, when we administered the STAR screener, when she looked at the number of students that were projected to basically fail the screener at the beginning of the year, that number, when we looked at the projections, has been cut by fifty percent based on the effective implementation of the tier system and supports that they have been able, and the safety nets that they have been able to put in place as well as they have done a variety of celebratory activities. And I just share one, she came by the office one day and she was dressed in her jersey and of course she has stepped out the box to help motivate her students. And I was speaking to her and I said, "How you doing today, Dr. Johnson?" She said, "Well, I'm Juicy J today for the students." That's her rap name. So that's what she is doing in order to move the needle there. And Dr. Johnson, if you would come at this time and talk about your book study.
Great evening.
Great evening.
To answer your question about the GOT stress book study, one of the things that is very important to me, and I always communicate this to my staff, that you can't serve others if you don't take care of self. So the reason why I wanted to start or focus on GOT stress is, is for me, as the leader of the building, it's important for me to know what the stresses are. And if there's anything that I can do as the leader of the school, I need to be able to support my teachers in that area. So I did learn that one of the things that especially, this is specifically for new teachers, they told me that their biggest stress, stressor was TST documentation, which is a, it's a requirement. We have to do that paperwork, but we really would like for us to look at the amount of paperwork that we're asking teachers to do because some of it is not really a requirement, but we, we require it as a district. And that would help tremendously as far as retaining teachers because believe it or not, the paperwork is a major, major barrier for teachers.
Right. Good job. I saw that and one of the things that, one of the questions that I have in addition to that is you've noticed the, the, the stress that they're having and you've communicated that as well. Have you seen any results?
I really have. We have, we put a motivation plan in place about five or six weeks ago and right now we're even doing a team-building exercise where it is a, it's, it's called the contest. But anyway, just coming together as a school, as a family, engaging in activities outside of the school day, like we went bowling with, with each other. We've had different types of parties. We had a wine and cheese party. There was no wine. Just for the record, because it was on campus. Just doing, we have some teachers that are studying wine and cheese by, you know, you can gripe just a little bit. You all, okay. Okay, but anyway. We've done a, a series of activities that have really boosted the climate in our school. We have a staff shout-out board. All of these things have helped to improve the level of collaboration. People are relying on one another and sometimes when you're in a situ, situation like we're in, it's easy to get down. So we have purposefully, and I say we because it's been a team effort, put systems in place to help make sure that we are addressing not just the, you know, the curriculum needs of teachers, but teachers as humans, the whole staff as humans. And we don't exclude anybody, by the way. Everyone is included in these activities, not just the teachers.
Yeah. So in my last question, if, if all, of all of the things that you've done and you obviously have done some great things, what do you consider the, the best or the one that you've gotten the results from was, was reading this book and talking about stress and?
Well, I think the, the most important thing that we've done with regard to student achievement because that's what we're held accountable for and I know these things help. But for instance, with third grade, Dr. Merritt talked about that, we use a, we were able to decrease the number of students who were projected to fail the third grade gate, which is a, if you score a level one, you failed the gate. They need to score at least a level two to pass. So in August, we had, we identified forty-one students that were projected to fail. When we took the assessment in March, the STAR assessment, that's what I'm referencing, that number had decreased to twenty students. I attribute that to our, our multi-tiered system of support. We have an interventionist. We also utilize a team of our paraprofessionals who I train myself personally on how to provide interventions. And then we also have a class-size reduction teacher that's working with our third graders. In addition to that, we're doing, we've done whatever there is to be done, we have done it or we are doing it at Timberlawn. So the proof will be in the pudding, but it will, you know, I, I believe that the needle will definitely move. So I'm very confident about that. We have faced some challenges in fourth and fifth grade with staffing, especially during the first semester of school, but we were able to alleviate that during the second semester and we've worked to try to compensate for those staffing issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Dr. Merritt would like for me to share one more thing. I'm sorry. We, I saw, um, I'm not really big on social media, but I do check it out just so I can be in the know. And I noticed that on, from Isible Elementary School, that a teacher had posted an anchor chart where the teacher modeled how to dissect a map question. And so instead of us having our teachers do it, we asked our students to do it. And basically what we did, we, we took samples, map items, placed it in the middle of a chart and students worked in groups to determine what was the correct answer. They had to justify which answer was correct, but in addition to that, they had to also explain why the other answer choices were incorrect. And they had to create a chart demonstrating all of this and present it to the class. So we've been doing that consistently as well.
That's wonderful.
That's wonderful. And if, if I may, Dr. Murray, I want to say to you and your staff and your team, especially those who are in the trenches such as you, those are the stories that we need to tell. Those are the stories we need to hear. And, and, and I say to you and the team, keep up the good work, but don't stop telling the story because we need to hear that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Dr. Murray?
That includes our at-risk presentations.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. Evans? Middle school, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be reporting those same categories for our two middle schools for tonight, Blackburn and Brinkley. Under the category of leadership, our principals have worked and have recruited highly qualified teachers, some for this school year and many for next school year. They participated in the April job fair. They have monitored instructional practices and engaged in strategic planning for next school year with their school's leadership team. They have also provided professional development that was outlined in their at-risk plans. Under curriculum and instruction, teachers have participated in several professional development sessions on research-based best practices. Mississippi Department of Education has provided content area professional development for all grade levels in the areas of math and ELA and for eighth grade science. Principals have assessed and budgeted for instructional technology needs. They have utilized the MDE lesson plan exemplar and they have organized their time in a different way for remediation. Under professional development, principals have worked to ensure the implementation of the professional development provided by the district support team. Teachers have participated in Saturday professional development sessions. Map assessment training has been provided. And professional development activities for next year are being determined. Schools have also worked to improve in the area of culture, in the area of climate and safety. Schools have worked to improve parent communication. They have conducted building-level walkthrough assessments with parents to get their input. They have implemented student growth and achievement celebration activities, PBIS recognition events. They have coordinated with school attendance officers to help create a climate to encourage improved attendance. Schools have hosted teacher appreciation activities and the leadership teams have attended the PBIS REACH training. And under the assessment category, principals have conducted fit meetings. They've ordered and received additional Chromebooks to assist with assessments in the building. Principals have implemented the assessment calendar. They've implemented map activity periods within the classroom for test preparation. And counselors have coordinated student workshops to discuss STAR, attendance, classroom grades, and benchmark data.
Wonderful.
Any questions?
Yeah, one question?
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. How are your, for instance, at Blackburn, how are they determining which professional developments they're, they're, they're needing as, as it relates to the consultants that are being used over there?
Dr. Nelson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are basing all of our professional development needs on our data. So it may be informal data based on like a walkthrough for, for the teacher or an observ, a formal observation, but also student data. We're looking at how our students are performing and seeing from that what our needs to do. Are teachers having a hard time helping students understand how to calculate statistics? Or what, what is it that our students are having the weaknesses? We're basing all of our needs and all of our PD sessions on the needs of our students.
Okay. How's that been going? What are the results have you, have you noticed?
Well, I'm like all the rest of my colleagues in the trenches and I have to say, you know, we're, we're all awaiting. We're right now in the middle of MAP and so in a few days we'll be wrapping that up and MDE will share with us very soon. You know, we, we're, we're working hard and from our data, we have seen growth based on STAR. So we have seen growth within the measures that we do have and that we can calculate within the building. But at the end of the day, ultimately, we're looking at what we're getting back from state assessments and MAP. So we're ready to go.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you. So that, that's, those are yours, aren't they, Ms. Evans? Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. We're now down to approval of administrative staff administrators who are being administratively moved or who has a position change for school year two seventeen through eighteen. Ms. Lyons? Oh. Well, I guess not.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. Dr. Murray, this is actually an information-only item.
Right.
It's for, the information is to provide you information on administrative staff who are being administratively moved or who will have a position titled, a position change for 2017, 2018.
Thank you. Now down to information action items. Consent agenda finance.
Again, board members, I present you two items for your approval tonight. The approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims for April eighth, two thousand and seven, seventeen through April twenty-first, twenty seventeen. And also approval of the budget for the George Elementary window restoration program. This represents the hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars that will be received from the Mississippi Department, Department of Archives and History toward that hundred and fifty thousand dollar project at George. This budget is being presented for your approval tonight for the remainder of the sixteen-seventeen school year.
So move, oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Yeah, so move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items, finance, A and B. Questions? Those in favor? Is Ms. Campbell there? Okay.
Thank you.
We're now down to consent agenda items, general. Colleagues, are there any of these that you'd like to pull?
Item C.
Item C?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Then I will entertain a motion for adoption of consent agenda items, A, B, D, E.
So move?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items, A, B, D, and E on the consent agenda items, general. Yes, Ms. Oppenheimer?
Quick question, again, a data question. Dr. Murray, would it be possible to get data from ELS about their student achievement with the kids that they work for, either for this school year or the past school year? Is that something that we could ask of them for the extended learning services?
Uh, yes, we, we can get that data.
Because I think that'd be really helpful. I know they've, and I greatly appreciate that they're offering this free service. So that, that would be one thing, but I do want to know how the kids who are involved are succeeding. And then the other thing too with them, I think, I think, I don't know if it's about covering our issues, but I would like to see more specifically information in whatever the contract or agreement or whatnot about students who can't pay the fees, have that laid out in there because I understand from the contract that they do have to pay, but some kids can get the DHS voucher or another type of waiver. I would want to make sure that no kid, no child, no student is inhibited from being able to participate based on any kind of financial barrier to the extended learning service.
Those in, those in favor? Thank you. Now we'll go back to agenda, um, item C. Approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Family Resource Center of North Mississippi and the Jackson Public School District. Let's get it on the floor. Motion for adoption.
So move?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt consent agenda items, general. C, Mr. Oppenheimer?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Can we get a deeper explanation of why this program, this online program, and then what are the, all the relationships? I know some of the questions I asked previous to the meeting about, you know, new, yeah, new summit and, you know, what's all the relationship? Who's doing what? I have, to be transparent, I have, what's it called? An inherent distrust of online programs for graduation options. So I just need to hear more about very concretely, what's this look like and what's happening for our students?
Okay.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Murray. You may recall during the presentation in MDE.
I do.
When we talked about graduation rates and the question was posed to the superintendent and to us, had we not considered utilizing this program through this particular center? We were not keenly aware of the program, so we engaged in some research to find out how we can do the same thing that's being done in other school districts. The bottom line to this program is to provide students with an opportunity to graduate from high school and meet the standards set forth by the State of Mississippi absent from the state test. from the state test. Once it was explained to us or we became aware of it, we began to engage in conversation with this particular center. And as a result of it, we realized that they received a grant through the Department of Education to provide this service utilizing New Summit School. The way the program would work, it is designed, in this case, for high school seniors who have met all the course requirements for graduation, but they have failed one or two state mandated tests. They were enrolled in this program free of charge, free of charge being through the grant. But the district must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the family center in order for New Summit to provide the services. The district's obligation would be to provide space during our summer program, which will be held at Moore High School. And through the online piece, because we have teachers that will be working during the summer, they will be there to provide supports to our students as resources. We believe by providing yet another opportunity for students to meet graduation requirements, it is also going to increase graduation rate. So we saw it as an opportunity to provide a win-win situation for the student to be able to graduate with a recognizable diploma from an accredited institution recognized by the State of Mississippi and IHL. So those students, barring anything other than that, were qualified to go on to college if they so choose or to enter into the military if they so choose or the community college.
Thank you for that. Is there, is there any data that exists that talks about like online diploma attainment and, I don't know, college or career outcomes?
For this particular program?
Maybe not for this one. But is there anything out there? I mean, I'd love it if it was for this one, but I, there might not be for this one as of yet.
Dr. Stanton, let me, let me interject. We have, maybe not specifically, but this, this program has been utilized all across the state. But what we find on the, on the opposite side of that is we have hundreds of students who can't graduate. And they're right now sitting at home with no options. And so for us, that's what's most important. You know, we, it's, it's our first kind of endeavor into the online graduation process as well. But the flip side of that is nothing. And so we think that the track record across the state has been utilized for years in many districts. And again, it was brought to us as why have you all not been doing this as an option for your students? Because again, so we don't necessarily have all of the data. But we do know that we have hundreds of students through our relationship with Graduation Alliance that have not met the bar. And they're, they're, they're just stuck. They can't do, can't be employed, don't have a diploma. So this is an option that we felt was absolutely necessary for our students.
And, and thank you for that. And I, and I remember we discussed it because I was at that particular presentation. And I appreciate that. And absolutely want all of our students to graduate with diplomas and whatnot. I just remember the context of the conversation or the, the way the person from MDE presented it as was, in his experience, I think his school district had gone, I think he said like from 65% to like 80% in like three years because of doing this. And to me, you know, our graduation numbers, you know, it's a numbers game, right? Because it's all related to, to funding. It's all related to all the various other things that we do. But I have this skepticism, right? That just because they've gotten this degree and this diploma through whatever the online course is, that it's actually preparing them for anything past it. So it's one thing to say we're getting them the diploma, but are they actually being prepared for a future? That's not still, oops, sorry, sitting at home, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. And I think, as mentioned, they would have met all other requirements with the exception of the state assessment. That's, that would be the only missing piece for these students.
That seems, to me, that seems reasonable enough that we ought to try to help them. Because it just seems as though they just need a leg up. And, you know, there are some online courses that are not legitimate. But I think that we have enough proof from this that says that it is. And the alternative seems to be much worse by the student just being home and never even attempting to do anything toward graduation. So I am optimistic about this. And I'm really saddened that we really didn't know about this prior to this opportunity because we probably could have helped a number of students in the past years that we just haven't been able to help. Ms. Sims?
Yes, Dr. Stanton. How many students are we anticipating we will have in this program this coming summer? And will they get their diploma from New Summit or from Jackson Public?
The number, right now, we're waiting to see the results from the retests that our students are taking now, which could very well determine the number. Also, we have an additional program through Hines Community College that we have several students that they're going to enroll in that prior to graduation. So the number could range from a low of 75 to a high of probably about 125, 150 students. But again, that's dependent on which program the parent choose if the student is not successful on the last retest we're doing now.
Okay. And where will they get their diploma from?
The diploma will come from, my understanding, Jackson Public Schools because they would have met the requirements that we have. But before I just commit on that, I need to look at the final details of the legal language.
Okay, if you just let us know.
We will.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
All right, thank you. So in light of, if you say, number of hundreds, you know, number of students that are, that are not, have not met requirements, you know, have not graduated, what are we doing differently to capture those students prior to their, in their, prior to their senior year of knowing where they are, what they need to do? Well, fortunately, the testing, that, that, those high-stakes tests, the way they are now, has kind of gone away. That, but we have students that have been in the pipeline for years that might have graduated, well, may have completed their coursework four or five years ago, but they can't pass the state test. And so they're just kind of out there. They, they don't have a diploma. And so this is an option for this group of students because we have students in the pipeline that just, for whatever reason, not good test takers, anxiety, whatever. There are a multitude of reasons. I've had, as principal at Moore, I had a student that was in the top five that couldn't pass the state test. Brilliant student, but he could not graduate. So there are examples, you know, hundreds of examples like that. So this just gives us another, another opportunity to address the needs of our student options that individuals have been taking advantage of, you know, again, for years of, or have had the opportunity to. And this grant was brought to our attention, and we did the research and bringing it to you all, hopefully for approval.
Mr., Dr. Lynn and Ms. Oppenheimer?
Yes, I just want to say this. I mean, if it's approved by MDE, I don't see why we, we shouldn't do it. I am always concerned about having students that can't graduate and we don't have a way to ensure that they, they get their diplomas like anybody else. So I see that as a win-win situation. And if it's approved by MDE, then surely they're not going to give us any credit for graduation if the diploma does not come from us. I wouldn't think that. So if you would make sure that that's, that happens as well. But, but I, I like that idea because we have to always give our children an options. And, and we shouldn't just, they shouldn't be stuck with just one. If we can find another way of getting them to where they need to get to, then I think we ought to do that.
Yes.
Ms. Oppenheimer?
Thanks, Madam President. I do want to follow up on the, the legal language that, that you mentioned in terms of who's actually getting credit for this. And I don't, if, if it is a legal question or a contract language.
I, I don't think it's a legal question.
Okay. So, so how come we wouldn't know if it's JPS getting credit for their graduating?
Well, when I speak of legal, I try not to interpret the MOUs or whatever it may be. So whatever the language is in the MOU, I'll talk with the legal department to get a better understanding, and then we can report that back to you.
Yes, and I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. The MOU does not address that.
So why wouldn't it be JPS's credit?
I, I wouldn't, I don't know.
Well, what, I'm sorry for clar- what are you asking?
All right, Dr. Stanton mentioned a moment ago, he wasn't sure if JPS gets the credit for the graduation. And so I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yes, JPS gets the credit for graduation.
I can't imagine why they wouldn't.
I thought you were talking about the.
Yeah. JPS gets the credit.
Sorry about that, if I misheard that. Yeah, thank you. Because I think that was your question, too.
So, Dr. Murray, you're saying that we are going to confer the diploma?
No, no, no. The, the student, again, if the student graduate, New Summit is the, is, is the organization, a school, accredited school.
Okay.
So they would graduate from New Summit. They are graduates still. So ultimately, it's about the student graduating. That, that's the, that's the, the idea of the whole scenario. It's about them graduating. But there is an opportunity for us. If we can document that a student graduated, then there is some benefit for us as well. But yet, now there are two different scenarios. There's a program that we're doing at Hines where they can, they will receive a JPS diploma because of the way that program is framed. But the New Summit, the MOU that's on the table now, they would have a New Summit diploma. But they would have a diploma.
A high school diploma.
Gotcha. In lieu of not having anything.
Right. Well, you know, I think that this looks like to me it's just a matter of, of equity and equality where, you know, everything being equal, you're able to provide the, the students with everything that everybody else has. But if you look through an equity lens, then these students need a little bit more supports than the regular students. And then that, that brings it up to a level of equity that allows the student to be able to obtain the same results as a regular high school students. But with just, with more supports toward an equi- and kind of an equitable way of attaining the same goal as regular high school students. Those in favor? Those opposed? One, thank you. We're now down to consent agenda items personnel. Ms. Lyons? Oh, Ms. Miller again.
Yeah, it's on me.
I'm just reading the list.
Ms. Murray, members of the board, the administration requests that the board approve the recommendations for school year 16, 17, and also the personnel matters for school year 17, 18, and the JR OTC staff for school year 17, 18.
Motion for adoption.
So move. Second.
Moved in second, those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other business?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Oppenheimer?
From the committee meeting yesterday on the student representation. For the recommendations from the committee.
You have a report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll be very brief since I know we're late in the evening. So let me pass these out both ways. So the, and Ms. Sims is here. I know Ms. Campbell was on the phone earlier. Yesterday, the three of us met with Dr. Murray and Ms. Shepherd to discuss the student representation policy that we had a number of folks speak about earlier. The biggest concern that I think is really important to mention early on in this discussion is the question was raised whether this would counteract anything that we're required to do under MDE. You know, is it against policy? Would it affect anything related to our cap or compliance and all this kind of stuff? And the, the response, and Ms. Shepherd, if I'm wrong, please jump right in, is that no, there's nothing in this that would go against MDE policy. That's why it's representative to the school board rather than on the school board. And so there's, you know, a little bit of a semantics thing in there that says because the state policy